Let's bring our meeting is going, that's our chaplain. If you would open our meeting prayer.
Let's pray by the God we just thank for this day, we thank God to come to serve as citizens by county. We ask you now, dear Lord, to just bless Joe Fraser's family, uh, city councilman that served eight years. We just asked a special blessing for them and for him, them allowing him to be a part of our community to leave us. We ask you now, dear Lord, to just bless each of us here today and use this to do your will and everything we say and do in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Freedom of information announcement in accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen seventy six is amended. The mayor's star mother's enterprise has been notified of the date, time, place and agenda of this meeting. Item four approval of minutes for February twenty third meeting. Got a motion and second any discussion. All in favor of motion signify I say a nine.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, the eyes have item five resolutions. Item six ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. We have a number of items here that are still on hold, so A, B, and C are still on hold. Item A, um, there's a pending committee item that I think may be changing. Is that what I understood was that coming on or staying off? Either which way, that may be coming back before you shortly, I think, as Ms. Davis told me earlier. Item B and C, we have to hold off third reading for the public hearing, which is supposed to be at our next meeting. So that takes us to item D. It's the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero three. You've had a copy of this ordinance since first reading. It's an ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement for development of a joint industrial and business park line between Marion County and Ori County. The property located in Ori County, the FedEx Ground Package System Incorporated, George Bishop Parkway, Myrtle Beach LLC, to require the payment of fee in lieu of averon taxes by businesses and industries located in the park. To apply zoning and other laws in the park to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and provide distribution of park revenues within the county. This is our, uh, we're included as the one percent, uh, in that multi county park. So we need to take action on second reading, please.
The move. Second, got a motion and second any discussion. All in favor of motion signify I say a nine. Opposed likewise, the eyes have it.
Item E, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero four. You as well have had a full copy of this ordinance since first reading. It's an ordinance to authorize and approve an agreement for the development of a joint industrial and business park by between Marion County and Ori County with property located in Ori County. I'm at a coast industrial park to require for the payment of fee in lieu of averon taxes by businesses and industries located in the park. To apply zoning and other laws in the park, right for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and provide for the distribution of park revenues within the county. This as well as a one percent, um, that we're to receive on being included in this part, need to take action on second reading, please.
So move second motion second any discussion. All in favor of motion signify I say a nine. Opposed likewise, the eyes have it.
Item F, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero five and ordinance to authorize the conveyance of a portion of Marion County tax parcel number zero five five dash zero zero dash zero zero dash one two one dash zero 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 containing two point nine two one acres off Wellman Road to F two FL Marion LP, a Texas partnership, so that to the terms of a purchase and sale agreement dated October sixth, twenty twenty two. To authorize county administrator or the chairman county council to execute any and all documents for the conveyance and transfer of the property and to authorize all the matters related to thereto to the effect of to effectuate the conveyance. You've had, you have a full copy of that ordinance in front of you. And for the new members, I did pass out to you a copy of the contract and get one of those details, uh, as it started back in October before you won council. We just take, need to take action on second reading, please.
So move. All right, who made the motion? I believe Tori. Get a second. Got a motion and second any discussion. All in favor of motion signify I say a nine. Opposed likewise, the eyes have it.
It's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item seven, committee reports, committee number one has a report at this time. Committee number two, Mr. Tenny.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, um, ask for Ms. Phyllis to come back at a later date and explain to the new council what's going on. Uh, if we get a, you know, what's situation.
Can you do that? Okay. All right, and that was on the animal shelter ordinance, you want her to come back and explain?
Yes, present to new council, um, what's going on because we, we so far behind what's going on, just bring us update what's going on.
Okay, so you'll be coming with council that comes.
Whatever, yeah, whenever you can come. What else is convenient for you?
We got animal shelter ordinance on here. Would it be appropriate for her to go ahead and talk now or we need to put her on the agenda later?
I think for what she needs to probably surprise the new members of, she probably needs a little bit of time to get that together.
Whatever you want to do.
What's general consensus? You want to go ahead and do it now?
I, I, it don't matter, Mike. I mean.
Or you want to wait?
She's ready, why not let her?
Then when you're ready, go ahead.
Back in September, I came before county council requesting several ordinance changes. And it was, it's due to the financial strain on the county as well as the physical and mental strain of the shelter employees, which includes working at home via text, Facebook, phone calls and very late into the night and even working on their days off because of the unwanted abandoned and owner surrender of all animals in the county. Uh, all of these ordinances are under eighty two dash six dash eight. So number one is where a section three identification currently reads that every owner is required to see then that an identification tag is securely fastened to the pet's collar or harness. The tag will clearly indicate the name and address of the owner and must be worn by the pet at all times unless the pet accompanied by the owner is engaged in hunting or other activity where a collar might endanger the pet's safety. It is our desire to amend to read as follows. Every owner is required to see that an identification tag is securely fastened to the pet's collar or harness with owner's contact information or be microchipped. If the owner chooses to use an identification tag, it must be worn by the pet at all times unless the pet accompanied by the owner is engaged in hunting or other activity where a collar might endanger the pet's safety. Basically, all we're asking is to include that the pet can be microchipped. If, if an owner wants it microchipped, that way they don't have to have a tag hanging. The expense of the animal of an animal arriving at the shelter has increased since nineteen eighty two and we need to increase the redemption fees to be updated as well. When an animal arrives at the shelter, it receives all necessary testing, vaccinations, microchip, flea treatment, heartworm prevention and deworming for an average of fifty dollars the minute it walks through the door. This helps to keep all the animals healthier where they're and they're able to be adopted or go to rescue instead of dying or being put down, and it keeps our staff and volunteers from spreading diseases and helps keep them from getting sick as well. This is why we are asking the following. Number two, whereas section eight redemption D redemption fees currently reads the fee set forth herein shall be collected from the owner by the animal control officer and turned over to the Marion County treasurer who shall make a monthly accounting of such funds. Such fees when collected shall go toward defraying the expense of operating the animal shelter. An initial fee of five dollars will be charged for empowerment for a period of from one to five days and the additional sum of one dollar will be charged for each day after beyond five days. It is our desire to amend to read as follows. Redent section eight redemption D redemption fees. The fee set forth herein shall be collected by the Marion County Shell Animal Shelter and turned over to the Marion County Treasurer who shall make a monthly accounting of such funds. Such fees when collected shall go toward defraying the expense of operating the animal shelter. An initial fee of fifty dollars will be charged for empowerment with a three dollar per day fee beginning day two. This covers the fifty dollars that the shelter has already spent on this animal that has come in, whether it's by owner surrender, um, code enforcement. You know, somebody picking up a stray. It is our desire to cut down on unwanted animals and we feel that if both males and females were neutered and, and or spayed, this would help greatly, which is why we are requesting this ordinance change. Whereas section nine adoption B currently reads no one spayed female, which has been impounded by reason of its being a stray shall be allowed to be adopted from the animal shelter unless the prospective owner has arranged to have the pet spayed or unless the requirement is waived by special permission of the animal control officer. It is our desire to amend to read as follows. No animal shall leave the Marion County Animal Shelter for adoption until it has been spayed or neutered, except in certain situations where the shelter director has waived this requirement for the animal at their discretion. With the state law does state that all animals have to be spayed or neutered um, before leaving the animal shelter. Our county ordinance only says the female has to be spayed. A male dog can impregnate a female every day and can produce eight puppies, up to eight to twelve puppies in that female. If they're not neutered, that's a lot of unwanted puppies. And I don't have the exact figure on this note, but eight times three sixty five, that's, that's a lot of puppies. But state law does require that, that they be neutered. Our county ordinance does not. Whereas section twelve penalties, A currently reads any person refusing to comply with the provision of this ordinance or violating any of the provision hereof shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and a, then a pun conviction shall be found not more than one hundred dollars or imprisoned not more than thirty days. It's our desire to amend it to read that any person found not in compliance with one or more provisions of this ordinance or violating one or more of these provisions herein shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and a pun conviction shall be fined not more than one thousand dollars or imprisonment not more than thirty days. We have several owners that have, um, they're, they're, they're dogs are repeat flyers. They get out, code enforcement picks them up, they, they bring them to the shelter. Their owner comes and gets them, takes them back home, lets them loose. They're not being contained and, and, um, that's why we're asking for a higher penalty so that every time an occurrence happens, the penalty could go up to help, um, owners maybe take more, more responsibility. Um, it's apparent that people are not having their animals spayed or neutered, allowing them to breed, creating up here goes unwanted puppies and kittens that end up at the shelter or wandering the roads. We feel it's time that these owners assume some responsibility and assist us in preventing unwanted puppies and kittens. One female dog can produce on average fifteen puppies a year. These fifteen puppies grow up to breed, it's a snowball of, of puppies, of possible unwanted dogs. If just the first fifteen puppies are brought into the shelter, fifteen puppies come in, it's an initial cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars for every thing for fifteen. A male dog can technically breed every day, creating an average of eight puppies a day. If we can spay at the cost of ninety five dollars and neuter at the rate of eighty five dollars, we have spent very little for major prevention of unwanted animals that end up at the shelter and running the roads. The grant and donations that support our shelter receives for spay neuter has helped the county, uh, and able to assist our county, uh, families with spay neuter. I have received sixty five hundred dollars in spay neuter grants and we are, we're struggling to use that money because we're down to one vet and we are now scheduling spay neuters out to April and May. So this is a major, what we thought was going to be, you know, a really simple, you know, get them their coupon, they, they call one of the two vets, we're now down to one vet and it's taking two months to get, um, our county animals. And this is for the, um, members and families of the county. This is not going toward the shelter animals. It's a grant for, um, families of Marion County. So, um, it's our desire to have a new ordinance regarding owner surrender of unwanted puppies and kittens. We have a lot of people that bring puppies and kittens, but they don't want to bring the mama or the daddy. Um, so, uh, we would like to add an ordinance that says if anyone's surrendering puppies or kittens owns either or both parents of said litter being surrendered, the owner must also temporarily consider, uh, surrender the parents for spay neuter and rabies vaccines if no proof can be provided. This also includes any litters or pup of puppies or kittens picked up by animal control at the request of the owner. So when we have the shelter, um, during kitten season, uh, we'll get eight to ten kittens, three or four times a day, up to two to three weeks at the time. And people are going, I got the mama cat, but I don't want the kittens. But we feel that the mama cat should be spayed. These people, it's time for the community to take their, take responsibility. And if they're not going to follow these ordinances, they need to be fined heavily, um. One of our employees got up at three o'clock in the morning, two weeks ago to go meet a transport in Florence so that we could get some of these animals out of the shelter. And the next week she had to be at work at six o'clock to get these animals out of the shelter. Our employees are doing all they can do, our, the staff at the shelter is one of the best we've ever had. Our, our shelter director, she's awesome. Our employees, they go above and beyond, but it's now time that the county council make our county people take responsibility for their animals. If you're gonna have an animal and you're gonna, you're, you're, you need to have it fixed, you need to have it spayed or neutered. Unless, you know, you're breeding these high dollar fancy dogs, but it, the community's got to start taking responsibility. That's where a lot of the issue is. And I do, I don't have current numbers, Barbara is prepared to come in two weeks on Thursday. But in, um, January of twenty twenty two through September twenty second, there were four hundred and twenty nine cats come through the shelter and seven hundred dogs. Three hundred and thirty nine cats were either rescued or adopted or, or released under our T N R barn program. Five hundred and eighty dogs went out January first through September twenty second. On September twenty second, we had ninety cats in the shelter and a hundred and twenty dogs. So that, that's, that's what I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth.
You will. Do I have any questions? I mean, I'm, I, I, I don't know if you all know me, but I actually have a five oh one C three that benefits the animal shelter. It's called Support Our Shelter. That's how I have gotten grants. The reason I created this, um, five oh one C three was not only to benefit the, the animal shelter for food, spay neuter for our community, but for, um, large donors to be able to donate, um, for our new shelter. Because they can write these, this donation off if it comes through the, uh, five oh one C three. Whereas if it went through the county, they couldn't write their donation off. So we, we currently, I currently have almost fifteen thousand dollars in our bank account and a lot of it is restricted donations for the food, for spay neuter, for emergency medical, for transportation, um, things that, that we're offsetting for the county.
Got a question, oh, you got one? There's one flicker. Say fast, picks up a dog hit in the middle of the road, nobody claimed that dog. That goes to the shelter, now what it does after that?
Uh, the shelter, uh, we do an, they do an intake, they do vaccinations. If it's an emergency, they take it directly to the vet and the county is responsible for that bill. We do put a plea out on Facebook and it, it's amazing how many people that come through. We put the dog's picture and we say, if you know this dog, if you've seen this dog, if you know who this dog belongs to, please contact the shelter. Well, that way we have actually found some of the owners and held them responsible. If nobody comes to claim this dog, it becomes the county's liability and county's responsibility for all medicals now. Uh, we, we currently have a situation, um, that I have agreed as part of Support Our Shelter to split what's probably going to be a major medical bill um, for, um, a cat that's in distress labor currently and headed to the vet. Um, pre prior to September, uh, I believe it was in August, I presented before council that we change our fifteen day holding fee, holding time for strays to revert back to five days of being held at the shelter, which is state law. It was agreed in council that we would meet in the middle for ten days. But if they're, from what I understand, and Mr. McLean may be able to, to assist me on this. If our shelter director, um, deems a state of emergency, we can go in and file a state of emergency under the state law and get our animals out in five days, whether it's through rescue. Um.
I'll take your word for it, I haven't muted.
Okay, uh, that's, that's what, that's what I've been told some of the shelters do. And I know it's a five day state law, um, that animals have to be held in a shelter. I know Dylan puts them down in less than that. Some counties hold them for, um, I don't think anybody holds them fifteen days anymore. If, if, when you hold an animal, the longer you hold that animal in the shelter, the more, um, the finances come out of the county. The animals tend to get kennel rage, um, disease spreads. So the shorter length of time they're in the, in the shelter, the better off the animal is, the better chances of us getting it out at a healthy state instead of at a sick rate.
What did you, your recommendation was to go from five dollars to reclaim a dog?
Fifty dollars.
To fifty?
Yes, sir.
What was the thousand dollars?
A fine up to if anybody the, um, the penalties that it says any person not found in compliance with one or more of the provisions of any of these ordinances.
All right, sure. And I know we're not supposed to have a discussion in here, but if somebody doesn't comply and paid a thousand dollars, what do you do then?
Stirring me up is good.
All right.
Um, a lot of.
Mr. Rogers.
I'm sorry.
What's the basis of the thousand dollars fee?
What's the basis?
Yeah.
Why have done, why did we want it?
Yes, but just the calculation of saying a thousand instead of five hundred.
It's up to a thousand, that way code enforcement could charge up to a thousand.
Okay.
Not, it doesn't have to be a thousand, but let's say, um, my dog gets out. Fletcher picks him up, takes him to the shelter, I have to go pay. Not only do I have to pay the fifty dollar, um, empowerment fee because they've now tested my dog. Um, I now have to pay a fine because there is an ordinance that your dogs have to be kept on your property, they have to be contained, they can't run loops. So now I'm paying a fifty dollar fine for my dog running loose. Well, three weeks later, my hundred and eighty pound dog gets out again. And Fletcher goes, Phyllis, I've, I've told you one time, you know, I gave you a lenient seat last time with the fifty dollar fine. This time I'm gonna charge you a hundred dollar fine. Well, K Bar sees a possum and he can't stand it, three weeks later, there he goes again, my dogs don't get out. Um, now the fine can be up, you know, a five hundred dollars fine. And the reason we're requesting this is we have frequent flyers, that's what we call them. We, I mean, if a certain dog comes in, we know who to call and no charges are being filed.
So it's totally discretionary?
Yes, it would be at the code enforcement.
So there are no, in this order, there's no tiers based on a policy?
There was not a tier in the first one, I did not create a tier, um, I'd be, you know.
I'm just asking.
I, I know, and I think a tier is good and, and I think it needs to be publicized and, you know, the community's just got to start taking responsibility. This man's dog's gotten out four times and we have four impregnated females.
And the other question I have, um, in terms of spay and neutering, it said the, what you would like for it to be amended to, that this would be waived at the discretion of the, uh?
The shelter director.
And what would be the basis of?
We, we can't spay and neuter under a certain age or a certain weight of a dog or if they're medically ill. And we have several rescues that we work with that will take, um, our medical, some of our, our major medical dogs that have not been spayed or neutered. And so our shelter director works with that rescue and she has a, a contract that they will spay or neuter that dog in the future. Um, when puppies or kittens are adopted out, they're too young. So they have to bring the animal back to the shelter and be spayed or neutered, um, within six months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So anybody else I can?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to restate my previous request. Based on everything that, that she just reeled out, when we started this ordinance, if you look at the agenda on item A for twenty twenty two dash one zero, this started out as an amendment to section seven B of, of our existing ordinance. Now it's kind of spilled out into a lot more of a comprehensive change. So if I could request council to terminate this off of the agenda, let's strike that ordinance altogether and let's start over with a new one. If Phyllis can get me the full ordinance with the requested changes highlighted, so you'll know exactly what the changes are that are requested. And that way we can start over next meeting with first reading and you'll have that full body of, of ordinance to, to consider.
You've heard the recommendations on the turn.
So move.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussions? All in favor of motion signify I say a nine. Opposed likewise, the eyes have it. Uh, you gonna have a committed to me?
I don't think.
You what? Okay.
I think that just took it off, that was kind of it. So Phyllis, if you're just getting me all that.
Can I email that to you?
Yes, ma'am.
I have to leave Saturday to go take care of.
Please, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. This time we need a legal update.
I don't have anything in this section.
Mr. Don Strickland. Executive Director, T D R T A.
Morning, Chairman, a bit ahead I present from here, I do have a power warning behind you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Um, thank y'all for, I'm gonna come and speak for you, council and staff, especially Mr. Brandon for helping me this morning. But, um, I've come with some good news with, uh, the new services we have upon Marion County. And just wanted to give you an update, kind of, kind of where we're headed and what we're seeing and some of what the future may look like. Um, we, you know, I'm not sure I shared this before, but P D R T A now has an app, um, that anyone can download on, on Android or an iPhone. And it's actually a live track of, of every big vehicle in our system. So it's basically if, if you were behind the bus and you had the app out, not in the driver's seat, passenger, and that bus made a right hand turn, you would actually see it on, on the map itself. So it really helped us with, um, you know, the where's my bus question with our district. It makes a big difference throughout the, throughout the area with that app and, you know, folks aren't having to wait outside in the middle of the summer for twenty minutes wondering when the bus is gonna get there. With that app and, you know, folks aren't having to wait outside in the middle of the summer for twenty minutes wondering when the bus is gonna get there. Um, so just a couple things, uh, people, next year is our fiftieth anniversary of P D R T A. Um, we are apparently the largest R T A provider in. The state of South Carolina when it comes to square miles. We have to cover thirty-five hundred square miles. And that's actually the third largest region in the country. Um, so it's a pretty, pretty big area among the six counties that we cover. Um, and Marion, Dillon, Marlboro, Chesterfield, Darlington, and Florence County, as well as. The Myrtle Beach Services that we run from Marion County and Lake City. Um, just came back from our uh annual transit association conference we have and P D R T A was selected as the twenty twenty-three transit provider of the year. And much of the reason for that is because of the new services that we've been able to start again in, in rural areas. So, you know, we thank Marion County for. Being a part of that, helping us get um back to, you know, having that service in all six counties that were commissioned to serve. Along with that, several other rewards, but you know, we're proud to be able to bring that one back to the PD region. Um, just a couple ridership facts. Uh, and this, and this time last year, we, we're actually currently over forty thousand trips of where we were um last March at the same time period. Over three hundred and fifty-five thousand total trips. Our demand response to Marion County is something we started before. We just started a new fixture outs in Marion and Mullins, and we're averaging around around two hundred trips. That's actually going, they're, they're calling us today ahead of time. We go to their home, so we're going to Brits Neck and Gresham and Sellers and Raines and um vehicles all over the place. Grabbing, grabbing folks that don't have access, getting them to simple service appointments. Uh, grocery store business, pharmacy, wherever they need to get to, we're providing those services. Uh, the Marion and Mullins Express has started in January. Um, February compared to January, we were up one hundred percent. Just over a hundred percent. So ridership is, is really starting to take off now. Um, and we expect that, that trend to continue. Uh, based on the first two weeks in March, we're already saying, we're expecting a state of increase over February. So the numbers, you know, folks are really starting to use the services and. Um. Uh, in both Mullins and Marion for that fixed route, but as well as that, the demand response now, we're bringing that in and connecting those, those folks to the fixed routes that's covering both uh Marion and Mullins. As well as Nichols. Uh, Marion County Myrtle Beach Service, uh, this time of year, it starts to pick back up and we're gonna be averaging about twenty per day going to and from work. And then obviously, and starting in May, um, we're getting close to the peak season, we'll be averaging about thirty employees. About half of those are coming from Mullins and about half are coming from Marion. So we take, we do that trip three hundred and sixty-three days a year. To Myrtle Beach, everyone's seven days a week, taking folks to and from work. Uh, for an update, uh, we, we do have a lot going on and, and where we're at now is eh, everyone's talking about workforce. And so we've been having a lot of conversations. Um, see Mr. Zach's over here today, we're going to develop, and we're hoping to, to work with them as well and be able to, to help some of the local. Um, businesses in Marion with workforce penetration, but. I do want to share that um, we recently have, well, I'm starting April tenth, we're, we're starting fixture out service to Reese Foods. Out um, at the three twenty-seven area where PD, the PD Commerce Center in Florence. That's Pepsi Performance Foods, Niagara, Vialen Water, um, and several other industries are involved in that. And that's the service that we're starting just in Florence. And I'm bringing that up because. They should, they're doing heat maps for us and they show us where all their employees are. And I was amazed by how many are coming from Marion County. And we dig, we dig a little bit deeper and what we find is that a lot of folks are paying to, to get to Florence from Marion County. Anywhere from ten to fifteen to thirty dollars each way. So these folks are making seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour. They're spending forty, fifty dollars a day. So if you look at that over the course of a week, two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars just to get to and from work. So I'm proposing the hoping that we, we do have some opportunity at the state level to be able to provide um additional federal funds to cut those costs away down. That they'll be able to bring that two hundred, three hundred dollars back and spend it locally in Marion County. Instead of having to pay for that ride. So it's gonna. An increase uh retention, obviously, it increases the reach of some of the industries to be able to get to, get new employees to work. Um, you know, our goal was not to take everybody out of Marion County, but for those that are already there, why not make it a little bit simpler for them to be able to get to and from work? So with that being said, Harbor Freight is the kind of the same, same picture. We ran, we received a hundred thousand dollar grant from Department of Workforce about six or seven years ago. And we ran that service five days a week and every day the bus was full going to Harbor Freight. So, you know, we're, we're looking at things like this again. Um, we had a legislative reception. A couple of weeks ago where uh Greg O'More, the senior H R for Harbor Freight came and actually spoke, and there was really good conversations at the state level. And they said, we need to take advantage of this now, basically. So we're continuing those conversations and. You know, my goal is for Marion County to be able to, to benefit from some of those conversations that we're having. Uh, we're, we just finished our R F P for a commuter van pool service. Basically, the local industries, whether it's DMA or S P A C O, it's anyone, if they have. Seven, eight, or ten employees coming from a certain area. Their employees will actually be trained to drive a van and then they, they'll pick up their other seven, eight coworkers and take those folks to work every day. That van will actually stay at their home, the van pool. Uh, the unique thing about this and one thing I think we have to do in order to make it successful is P D R T A will offer a guaranteed ride home program. So if they get a phone call at work at lunchtime and their kid fell at, fell at school and broke their arm or something. We'd actually have a vehicle at that workplace within thirty minutes, take them to the school. Get their kid, take them to the doctor if they need to, and then take them back home. And that's part of the guaranteed rides. They're not having to wait till the end of the day to be able to catch the van pool back. And that's another reason why we have to have more than one driver trained on, on the routes. But that contract is in place and we're, we're excited to be able to bring that to local businesses and industries. And then um, the Marion Mullins Express and Demand Response Services. Based on the miracle we've seen just in the past few months, we anticipate about twenty-five hundred month, twenty, twenty-five hundred trips per month at, at the end of this year. And that, that may be conservative, but it could be more than that. Uh, right now in Marlboro County, we're doing thirty-five hundred or four thousand, but Marion County service, the way that it started, I think we're gonna exceed what we're doing in, in Marlboro County pretty quickly. And, and, and also the Dillon County. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, just, just finished up our renovation, did a ribbon cutting earlier in January for our new mayor, our Marion office, not new marriage, been, been ours for a long time, but we completely renovated that, that place. And so we do have new dispatchers and staff. Uh, we, we haven't. Fully opened it yet, but we're hoping to do that sometime early, mid-April. And that'll allow drivers to have a break here in different amenities for lunch and whatnot, so they don't, they have a choice to go sit down and relax whenever they're not, you know, covering routes. And then uh, on here I do have working with account development and, and a, you know, to phase in additional workplace, workforce routes locally. And we've talked to. Quite a few different industries locally that have shared interests and it's a matter of trying to get all them to the table, we'll be able to have conversations at, at what that may look like. Um, now that we have the central services going in Marion County, it's easy to phase in a five A M, six A M, seven A M. Uh, workforce service in this area. And then after the central service is over at four or five o'clock, you'd be able to bring second shift in. Um, as well as take your first shift folks home. And uh, we are, we are doing a feasibility study this year. Um, class um is actually helping us sponsor that, that program so that we'll touch. Um, and our entire region that we serve. Just a few more things. Uh, so what we found, uh, we do surveys on board our buses every year throughout entire service area. And what we've found recently is that forty-four percent of everybody that's stepping on our bus, they're going to work. We're going to or from work. Um, eighty percent are going to school, so we have partnerships with uh Florence Johnson Tech, Francis Marion Adult Education. Um, North Eastern Tech, a lot, a lot of different locations, so that's, some of that's going to school. Twenty-one percent are going for medical purposes and then seventy percent, that's typically your grocery stores, your pharmacies, um, you know, uh, the central services technically. But the big thing here is that forty-four percent number because it continues to grow for the R T A. And you know that as we develop more workforce opportunities, that number will be. Probably will, you know, closer to fifty percent, so that half of everyone using our systems going to work by the end of this year. This is always the interesting one, but our most recent survey showed that eighty-one percent of all of our riders said they do not have access to a car. Ninety percent said they do. But then we drill it down to a little further to the number of cars in the household. Sixty-eight said they have, sixty-eight percent said they have no cars in the household. And then up to thirty-two percent, they do have cars in the household. What we find is that, that maybe someone going to school, going to work early in the morning, taking that vehicle, leaving everyone else at home without a ride. And that's really why P D R T A is here, be able to provide services for those that, that need it. Our average age range across our system now, forty percent, um, of forty to sixty years old, twenty-eight percent are twenty to forty. And this speaks to the workforce. Um, sixty-eight percent of everybody that's using our services are between twenty and sixty, so that's most of your folks that are working. Five percent are under twenty. That number's gonna grow just because of educational things we have going on. And then twenty-seven percent roughly, I think that places about ninety-five to a hundred thousand folks on our, on our systems are, are sixty years and older. This is just a picture of our transit system in Florence and, you know, this is kind of what I, by now we have a smaller scale in Marion County, but this is kind of what I envision. In Marion County is that, you know, you have eventually five or six routes that are converted in the same place and folks have access to get anywhere in Marion County. Or potentially outside of Marion County that they want to get to. This is a, a waiting area that we have and we'd love to do this at some point as well uh for Marion County. So it's a lot of good, a lot of good things happening. Um. This is our budget season, so we're trying to figure out, you know, kind of what our services will look like in twenty-three, twenty-four. We, our fiscal year starts till I won. Um, I think I've shared before, but roughly sixty-eight, seventy percent of what we do is covered on the federal and state side. But we have to have local funding in order to have access to the federal funds. And so we are, you know. We don't want the, the heavy lift on the county or anybody else. Thankful for Healthcare Foundation, you know, Trinity Behavioral Health, Anderson Brothers Bank. Obviously the county and the cities, and we have several others, but. We want to grow that list for other industries so that, you know, the, the number gets smaller as the more partners we bring on. And that's our goal as we move forward. Is to really try to go after the folks that are gonna benefit themselves. If we're bringing employees to a front door, the employer should see that as a benefit and be able to be a partner and kind of this. Oh, vision that we have going on now. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. I appreciate what you do for the people of Marion County. I certainly appreciate you coming and presenting this morning. I had no idea.
Yes, sir.
So thank you again for what you wanted to do, Ms. Floyd.
Is, is there any cost to the participants?
That's a great question. This service, because of our local partnerships, we've been able to provide it fair free. So there's no cost to those that are using that service. And we, you know, you can imagine that if we were, we had a little bus running in Mullins. And we, and we have to send someone from, from Florence to pick up a vault that may have a hundred dollars in it. By the time they get there, pick it up, take it back to Florence, count it, and take it to the bank, we spent a hundred dollars trying to collect a hundred dollars. So. I'm thankful that we're able to do it fair free. It, it will have an impact as far as the number of riders and. Passenger trips and mileage impacts our federal funding. So if that number grows in future years, we'll have more federal funding to do more of the services that we have. Um, I, I do want to say P D R T A receives um, well, we, it's a part of regulations, but we do have. Um, hours that we can dedicate. So if the county has an event, whether it's. You know, whatever it may be, P D R T A at no additional charge can have up to forty hours be able to provide, whether it's a trolley or a bus. Or anything that the county may need. Um, so if it's something that, that comes up, whether it's a festival or parade or whatever it may be, or. Or official county business, if you have a tour that you want to do. Shazak did a tour to Inland Port for his folks and. At no cost because that's part of that forty hours that we have that we can bring to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rogers. Um, what's the name of the app? I, I love that. I think this is.
Uh, it's P D R T A Sync, S Y N C. Pack that in, you should, you should pull it up. And there, we're, we're doing a few things, different things there. We're gonna eventually hopefully have opportunity for businesses to be able to advertise on there. That could help us with local funding as well. Um, but we were still working toward that. We've been promised that it would be done six months ago. We're still working on it though, but the app is, is great, really helps out. With um, folks looking for where the bus is.
Is there any information on your website about the um, the call info service to be recalled?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, on our website, um, there's a whole dedicated section for routes. You can click on Marion County and then it should spell out. What the, the Marion Express, the Mullins Express, the Demand and Response Service. Basically, you just call it's our main number twenty-four hours in advance and then we'll, we'll get those folks scheduled. I, I got a call yesterday. One of my board members connected a lady, her son, and I'm not gonna say name. Her son was involved in an accident. And it was pretty broken up pretty bad. She's been paying two, between two hundred and three hundred dollars a trip for someone to come get her son and take him to her appointments. And she's spending her retirement to do this. And she called, we talked for about ten or fifteen minutes. And he's now in this, in this space where he can get, um, he can get in a wheelchair. And I told her when he's ambulatory, if he can get in a wheelchair, and she has a chair, I said, we will come to your house and pick him up. And no charge. And basically I could hear her like, you know, crying in the background about what that means to her. So. That's why we're in here and be able to help folks like that, be able to. You know, you imagine paying two or three hundred dollars a trip when you're already on limited income. So we'll be able to help situations like that.
Any other question?
Thank you. What he does?
All right, Ms. Watford, administrative over there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Um, I do have some capital sale tax updates. Uh, we are finalizing the Mullins. Um, Jim, we should be finished. Um, probably this week, by the end of this week, so we're excited about that. And also, um, obviously we've started the parking lot renovations and should be completing that um. Around June of this year. Um, the detention center update, I, I, myself, Senator Williams, um, Sheriff Wallace and um, Mr. Floyd, Director Floyd. Did have a meeting with um. With um Blake Taylor, who is the detention center director, um, in response to the letter that was presented. Um, we did. Um, update him on some of the projects that we um have already completed and we've asked for an extension to. Allow us time to make additional improvements. So that is our update for the detention center. And um, I wanted to remind council that we still need um an appointment for the tax review and a bill sport. That's all I have.
Do you have some appointments for that, Floyd?
There's some dismissing to, to district.
Requesting comments by council members. I'd like to make a request that Clinton Lodge is, I think, celebrating. Two hundred years of the building that they're in. Mr. Turner?
That's correct, sir. Uh. In eighteen-ten, we had minutes from eighteen-ten. And uh, the building was built, it'll be two hundred years old. I think it's the third or the fourth oldest building in Marion. I think the first oldest building is right across from PD Federal. That house was moved. But I think Clinton Lodge is the third or the fourth oldest building in Marion County. And uh, the Grand Master of uh, that South Carolina will be there Saturday at eleven o'clock. All is welcome. Uh, I was mastered at Lodge in two thousand twelve. My son was master in two thousand seventeen, is dear to my heart. But I will not be able to attend it, but uh, I appreciate if you'll be doing, get a letter, I shall appreciate it.
Chair, thank you. So in two thou- in two thousand and ten, we did a letter for the lodge, not for the building.
That is correct.
And what they're requesting is a letter for the building, which is now two hundred years old. So I'd like to put that in form of a motion. Second, got a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by the saying I?
Ah.
Opposed likewise, the eyes have it, motion passed. Any other thing or comments by council members?
Yeah.
Mr. Rogers.
Um, has there been any update about the library, um, getting a budget completed?
No, sir. I have not had an update, um, but I can reach out to their council and get an update as long, as well as their financial director.
And have they hired, you know, not hired anyone yet?
They have not had a director yet. Um, I, my understanding is they're still in the search for a director. Um, they do have an interview.
Thank you. And have you all started taking some action, some concern raised in the auto report presentation?
Um, yes, sir. We, um, that is gonna be an ongoing process that is not gonna be um, you know, overnight. Venture, but we have. Um, discussed, we planned, um, and we would continue to plan to make changes to make sure that we address everything in that audit.
Thank you. Can you give us some specific and executive session?
I can.
Thank you. Um, lastly, uh, can you have someone go out and look at the uh, there's a bridge, zero five one two two. Um, the water is backed up heavily between nine and eight. Um, the, the water is backed up heavily between nine oh eight Eagle Road and Russell Road. Probably the situation would be, um, I've got some photos I shared with the waters getting up to the bridge and the water's not moving. That water is usually moving.
Yes, sir. What was the?
The bridge number zero five one two two.
Yes, sir. I will, I will contact my public works director, Mr. Dow Black. We'll have a discussion about that.
Thank you.
The only thing I have, Ms. Chairman, and, uh, Ms. Tavitz, uh, brought a light about this, uh, tax appeal board. We do need to get on, I believe, everything. You said two of them missing. To, uh, talked to Mr. Brogdon the other day. He's going to send a letter out in May. I think that's what he told me. So that's all I got, Ms. Chair.
Anybody else? All right, we need an executive session.
So move.
All right, for the purpose of
Personnel and Contractual.
Personnel and Contractual. So I need a motion.
A motion.
Second, all favor to motion.
Ah.
I'm out of first out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second, any discussion? All favor to motion, signify by the saying, I?
Ah.
Opposed likewise, the eyes have it. When in executive session for personnel and contractual matter, no action was taken, what I hear from council. Or administrator.
Mr. Chairman, um, I will, and members of council, like to, um, accept the council for a personnel matter, um, uh, recommend and ask council or approval to go from twenty-six pay periods to twenty-four pay periods, um, a year for our benefits purposes. Um, this will allow employees to have two months, um, without any deductions from health insurance and, um, from their pensions. For the twenty-four months, it will allow a cleaner billing process for employees. So I'm asking council to, um, approve the twenty-four pay periods for.
So move.
Second, motion second, discussion. All in favor of motion, signify by the saying, I?
Ah.
Opposed likewise, the eyes have it.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, um, the next thing is, is the Florence Regional Airport, um, is recommending that increase our quarterly, uh, pay heads from a hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars per quarter.
So move.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor of motion, signify by the saying, I?
Ah.
Opposed likewise, the eyes have it.
And Mr. Chairman and members of council, the last item is to allow the current directors who, directors and department heads who have a vehicle assigned to them who also work in the second location to allow them to take those vehicles home. I'm asking council's approval.
So move. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor of motion, signify by the saying, I?
Ah.
Opposed likewise?
Ah.
The, the eyes have it.
Thank you.
Well, give me a jury or not?
Anything else that are good accounts?
I'm not going to jury.